Three more minutes, so our RG will be tabled because I don't have the paperwork.
Okay.
What were the other ones, Tom?
You asked about control. Can't make it.
She can't come in, but apparently Josh sent you something.
We did already look at her on report, her monthly report.
Right, but I guess he sent something since then with her taking a visit and.
And I heard it was all squared away.
Okay, as long as you know what's going on.
Yeah.
And the third one was Kincher's contract. He said he sent it to you guys last week. I don't have any paperwork that he sent to me to have that signed.
That's what teaching was like for six months in a nutshell. There's feedback, where's it coming from?
And you got an email from Jennifer.
I just saw that, so we're gonna have to do that starting tomorrow. And I'll do some waiting. I'll read, I'll bring it up under new business.
Just waiting for you.
Thank you. I have a SCADA contract, but that's what you gave me a copy of, so that's the only contract I had. You were looking for a contract.
Kincher, he said he sent the paperwork to you last week. He didn't send it to me, so I can't print it for you, so it'll have to be tabled.
Okay, yes, you know what? He sent it during the meeting. We had it for the meeting, but then we tabled it because he was working on something with it still.
I think he thinks if he sends it to you, I have it automatically.
That's not so, but so we're gonna table I, we're gonna table J.
Table two A.
And A, good us, moving right along.
I'm already.
Okay, so open the meeting at six o'clock. We've been recorded a couple times. So first up, we have the meeting minutes from August 2nd. No, today's August 2nd. July 19th. They're not there. We don't have, okay, motion to table that until next week. On favor? Audience participation comment? Yes, this is where you can come on up.
Okay, well, thank you for having me. I'll just read this little letter right here.
Thank you.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to know why I was not contacted by the town in any manner concerning this ongoing issue over Sperry Road.
Will you do me a favor? Sorry, don't make sure I step closer to that microphone and then people, does it see it hanging from the ceiling? We're all technical here. Okay, yep, and then that way people at home can hear it. I apologize.
Okay, that's no problem. Okay, so the first thing I would like to say is I would like to know why I was not contacted by the town in any manner concerning this ongoing issue over Sperry Road, when in fact, the so-called part of the road, Jason Stover's trying to reopen, has been my family's land since the 1960s and of which I now own. I keep finding out about this by reading about it in the newspaper, seeing something about it on the website, as I just did a few hours ago. I'd hate to think about the repercussions for the town had taken any action without my consent. Secondly, he first purchased the undeveloped and landlocked land in February of 2018, and he stopped by our home several times to discuss trying to open up the road. We stated that we would never begrudge him, obviously, of going down our property to his land, but that we did not want the Town of Lanford doing this because it is our personal property. And when my dad wanted help from the town to go a few hundred feet concerning putting in a better road for access for a cell tower, he was completely denied. My dad, in fact, paid several thousand dollars fixing the road with no help from the town. To this day, by the way, the Town of Lanford has emergency use from the cell tower, so you're welcome. Also, my mother and I inquired about putting up a gate across the road back in 2015 or 2016, and we were told most definitely if we wanted to, as long as the landowners had a key, if it were locked. After all, it was for a property. I also have a couple of maps, maps, if you'd like to see where the road is in. Throughout the years, we have done our best to monitor vehicles, as we have had trash dumped at the end of the property, and also talk with dirt fight riders, hunters, et cetera. The third point I'd like to make is that if I had asked for help from the town several times, going back to 2006, concerning the extreme danger of pulling out Sperry Road onto Russell Stage Road. Throughout all the years, the only thing that has happened is brush clearing, which is done normally on any road. I've been misquoted in the newspaper over it. At the time of the major brush clearing, it was a big to-do with the landowner, but we sorted it out, and you believe me that I had never said to go chop down all the trees. I've asked for a mirror for the residents on the road to view before pulling out or some other solar caution light, but I've been told that kids would break a mirror. So if we can't even get help to fix the beginning of our extremely dangerous road that has had a fatality there because of this issue, then why should we, the town, concern themselves with taking my property to make a road that is just going to get logged on and destroyed? This issue goes back 15 years to no resolve, and Jason's issue has been for three years. How else have I been treated by the town? I was sent a tax bill for Jason's property when the old tax collector was in office stating that it was left over from when my dad owned the property, and would I please pay it? I repeatedly had snow plowed into and left at my driveway, and at this portion of the road we're talking about, I've had to call constantly and even called this past winter. I have pictures of this in my mailbox at the time that was hit and left dangling, even though the circle turnaround area is quite large. My husband several years ago was given a warning when he parked at the threshold of our driveway during a snowstorm for blocking the road. We also did fix the road where the plow truck got stuck this past winter on our property and never sent a bill or even told the town of their mishap, so again, you're welcome. I've almost overpaid almost $300 for personal property on our horse that we had at the time, a town error, and then told their animals look good at our property, when in fact, there weren't any there for several years. The list goes on and on, so let's not make it any worse. I would just like to close by saying again, if you would like to go to your property, Jason, I expected him to be sitting right here. I have no problem with that, but I do not consent to the Town of Lanford doing anything to the road past the turnaround. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, go ahead.
On your deed, does it say that you have bought Sperry Road or the land across?
I actually would not know at the moment because this was sprung on me so quickly that I did not have time to get everything out.
Okay, because I would personally, as a member of the board, I would like to see a copy of the deed for proof. Would that approve that that road stops there?
I can get you copies of all the deeds.
A map doesn't always mean anything where your deed is gonna mean a lot more than a map.
Okay, I can certainly get you copies. I have them, but just not in my possession because I found out about this just by looking on the website every last minute and try to get this all together.
All right.
So like, as I was telling you, we did, we happened to do research on the end of the road for the past few weeks, trying to figure out exactly if it was a town-owned or not, so. Joanne just left, but I will ask Joanne to note that whatever we came up with, that we send a copy of that to you, so you have that information as well. I know it went back and forth a little bit, the information we were getting. One week, we were fairly certain that it was not a town road, and then we were told it was town road to a certain point, so I don't know the details exactly where they were saying that was, but we can get that for you.
Okay, and why, if this has kind of been ongoing for three years, hasn't the town never ever reached out to me in any capacity whatsoever?
This has only been ongoing for the last, when did he come visit us?
About three weeks ago.
About three weeks ago.
This, that was the second time.
That was his second time, but this was the only time he'd been asking us to do anything about it. A while back, I think he came.
Not according to when I spoke to the highway department guy a few times before, like the one that's there now.
My understanding was, I remember him coming a few years ago and talking about purchasing the property, but I don't remember him asking about a road expansion. I could, I could be wrong, but I don't remember.
It even says right on the tax bills and everything, or something I saw before, and I didn't bring it, but I know I've seen it. It says right on there, landlocked.
Yeah, as when he purchased the property, you're saying, he saw that it was landlocked.
So about that last time, I was approached by the last superintendent of the highway?
Rainey?
No.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay.
And he approached me, and he said that he was coming down to open this road up, period.
Brad came down and said he was gonna open Sperry.
Yes, because I gave him a little bit of trouble about plowing snow onto my property and closing my road off.
Yeah.
I couldn't even get out of my own driveway.
So you're saying he was gonna open up the end of the road?
Very, all the way to the, all the way to the end. He said he was coming down, replacing culverts, and he was gonna open up the whole road.
But he never did.
No. But that's what he told me.
But I mean, it's giving us a lot of stress.
That was been a while, because we've had Rainey for, we had Rainey and now we have Dave, so yeah.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm a little confused. I thought it was illegal to sell landlocked land.
I was also told by him that if the town, if the Town of Lanford, yeah, I landlocked myself. That's how I've seen it, because it's on my own, because I landlocked myself from the next parcel of my land. That if the Town of Lanford listened to the landlock thing, there would be no passes in the Town of Lanford, because just about everybody at Lanford is landlocked. So the Town of Lanford doesn't listen to it if it's landlocked. That doesn't mean a darn thing, is what I was told.
When the turnpike went through, they land, the turnpike landlocked a lot of land, all right? And then, that's after the turnpike went through, that's when they made it illegal to landlock land. So the state did us a big favor by putting in the turnpike and then making a lot of land. The town owns land that is landlocked by the turnpike. So, and there's a lot of private owners that have land on the other side of the turnpike they cannot access.
Right, and I already know the issue. If you have the dispute of any man, and you bring it to court, the judge will say, okay, you on the right-hand side of the road, now this is yours, and you on the left side of the road, this is yours. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with him going to his own property. But if my father couldn't get help to go a little tiny bit to put the cell tower road in, I don't think it's right to open it up for him. He's been here just a few years, and now he's crying because he just wants to make the almighty dollar, when in fact, the beginning of Sperry Road is extremely dangerous, and nobody has even done anything about that except for normal brush clearing. So, I mean, something's, you know, gotta be done about the beginning of the road by concern yourself in the end. If the beginning's so dangerous to begin with.
Um, Dave, can we get a mirror to put at the end of that road? Across from the end of the street, those, like the bubble mirrors, so that when they're pulling out, they can see traffic coming from either direction? Do you know anything?
They just have to find out a Google location for it.
Okay. I don't know anything about those. Do you need to like, I don't know how you put them up, if there's any like paperwork or legality or?
I'm not, just do it first.
Okay, can you just look into that a little bit? I don't know, maybe Rainey had planned on purchasing one. I don't know if you wanna ask him.
I never heard it.
It, just as a start?
He told that he could put up a mirror.
Okay.
But the kids would just break it.
He said that.
So he didn't wanna do it.
But most likely it's.
But that's like again with you.
Yeah. That was Brad, you said.
Yes, this was a while back.
Yeah, that's at least a good start, I think, and I don't think there would be a problem with that. I'll see why, but, okay. Um.
Like you said, like too.
Yeah. Joanne, will you make a note that any of the information we found regarding the ends of Sperry Road be sent over to them, so they can know if they have it as well? So the select board hasn't made a decision about what we were planning on doing. We're still doing some research. Um, I'm not sure who this is. Rainey, is that you?
Yes.
I thought I recognized your voice. Did you wanna add something?
Actually, I'd like to add a number of things.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first of all, when she mentioned about the highway department vehicle being stuck in the driveway, that was because we were trying to rescue a ambulance that had turned around there, got stuck in the driveway, which also ended up, we getting stuck trying to get them out of there. As far as the end of the road goes, I had spoke to her, and she had informed me that her father had actually paid for the culvert put in the stream past their property. That stream has to be approved by conservation to do any type of repair or, or in any kind of improvement on it, because the gentleman who owned the property at the end wanted to originally have it done because the the forester told him he had to have a new culvert to get the roadway in, so he could have the property logged. Well, that being said, when I checked under Mass DOT, the road footage, yes, it did go further beyond that culvert. However, there was no justification for us to turn around and replace that culvert and redo that roadway for a logging situation. Later on, the gentleman wanted to have it done because he had told me he was planning to build. But all of that being said, Sperry Road was done up to that point, and as she had said, right up to the driveway of where it goes for the tower to maintain it for residents. There was no residency afterward there, so therefore, there was no more investment in that.
Okay, yes, excuse me, though, the town did not maintain it all the way to the gate entrance of where the cell tower goes. They only maintained it to the turnaround circle. And when my father replaces culvert, this was also back in like the 60s or early 70s, so I don't even know if there was a conservation commission at the time.
And he didn't pay anybody.
And he didn't pay anybody to do it. He did it himself, and in fact, the old culvert had washed away, and he couldn't able to go down onto his own property. So I would like to add that.
I, I, I understand, and I'm not disputing that. What I was trying to say was that that road had not been utilized since the mass turnpike went in, and that the culvert was put in, because as you had told me, he had put it in at his expense.
Yes.
And we did not maintain it because we did not maintain the road beyond that point.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. And, and as far as getting stuck down there and having to pull an ambulance out or anything else like that, we did not squabble or make any trouble for the town or anything or call you complaining like I normally do about the snow being dropped in front of my driveway. We just.
I know, but the point, the point I was trying to make was, the highway department ended up getting stuck because they went off the main road through the driveway to try to rescue the ambulance that was in the driveway, not on Sperry Road.
Oh, well, then I think we're talking about two different places, because I'm just talking about down at the end of Sperry Road where the turnaround is, and the town truck definitely was stuck down there. There were ginormous rucks, but in any case, whatever, I mean, it is what it is. That's okay. I wasn't complaining about it. I'm just saying, we fixed it and graded the road and just left it at that.
And as far as the entrance, as far as the entrance of Sperry Road off of Russell Stage, over a year and a half ago, we went down there at a number of requests, and we had turned around and pushed the road edge way, as far as 14 feet back, and took out most of the wall and most of the embankment there to give a better line of sight for any traffic coming uphill.
Okay, but it's still honestly, I mean, to be completely 100% honest with you, and I appreciate you doing that, but just trimming the trees and doing that, it still doesn't give any better sight when you're pulling out. I'm sorry, but it just does not.
Still can't see.
You still cannot see.
Well, that, that would have to be because of vegetation, because as far as property level, I understand in a car, it may be, it may be difficult if the vegetation isn't cut down, but as far as nor, other vehicles, it was not an issue, but the primary there was the actual height of the embankment. And we took the embankment down almost six feet on the upper side of Sperry, going uphill, downhill side.
Yeah, but when you.
Around the vegetation.
Okay, but when you're still going up Russell Stage Road, and you're trying to make a left-hand turn onto Sperry Road, you still cannot see any better than you could three years ago, or two weeks ago, or 20 years ago. You still can't. The road itself is still in the way. So I appreciate what you did do, but it's not, has nothing to do with vegetation, and you still cannot see when you pull out of Sperry Road or when you try to make a left onto Sperry, no matter how much you cut. I'm sorry, but you still cannot see.
But we, we also, we also went far as, as far back as the law allows us by road right of way. Otherwise, we're encroaching on personal, private property.
But it doesn't have to do with the personal property or the vegetation on the side of the road. It's the hump in the middle of the road itself. That is what I'm trying to get you to understand.
But I don't think at this point, the town can go in there and cut that road down. I, I think it would be costly.
I doubt that they would either. That's why I suggested just putting up like a mirror, one of those bubble mirrors, so the people pulling out could at least see, or if you're trying to make a left, you can look and see, oh, okay, there's no car coming. It's okay, I can turn. I'm not gonna get creamed trying to pull on my, you know, my road.
Kara, may I make one more statement?
Sure, go ahead.
As far, as far as a mirror going, the town has every right to turn around and take care of that. That's not, that's not an issue. I'm just talking about the land itself. We have no right to encroach any further than we did. To turn around and change the angle of view, you would have to redesign that road. So that for, therefore, as far as putting a mirror up, that's, that's absolutely without any, any discussion whatsoever within the highway department's ability to do.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, and then maybe just making sure that it's, that the embankment there is trimmed. So that.
Yeah.
Hasn't grown back at all. Okay. All right, thank you for the history, Rainey. I appreciate it. Um, so it sounds like we can do what we can for the end of the road, and as far as the discussion, I'm sorry, the beginning of the road. As far as the discussion on the end of the road, I don't think, we're not at a point where we've made any decisions or where we have it on an action item for us.
Like I say, we've got one, one thing from the lawyers that say it goes clear through to the fence. You say it stops at the gate. If your deed says that you won't across that or to the center of it, then it stops at the gate.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get the deeds out.
So yeah, if you don't mind getting us a copy of that, we'll get you a copy of what we have, and then we can revisit it in two weeks, if we can. I guess we can move it to action item in two weeks, and we can make, if that gives us enough time to review everything, and then we can make a decision at that point.
Okay, because I mean, I'm not trying to make trouble for anybody. I just wanna live on my property and be less involved.
No, I totally understand.
Minding my own business.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I wasn't trying to make trouble for anybody. I was just down to mind my own business, and then, you know, have to find out about this here and there.
Yeah, I apologize that you weren't let, you know, that no one let you know earlier. Like I said, it was a discussion we've been having for about three weeks. I didn't even realize that you own. Yeah.
We've been hearing about it now for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even in my paper here that I got the same, I mean, and this was back 516, 2019.
Yeah.
He is waiting for conservation commission info on replacing a culvert on Sperry Road. We've only got a 20-foot wide area to work with, he said, and the town needs permission from conservation to proceed because of the wet area.
Yeah.
And that was back, I mean, May 16th, 2019.
Sure. As far, as far as us making a decision, it has only been like a few weeks that we've been sitting with it and trying to gather information, just to. But we'll definitely keep in touch with you now going forward, and I definitely appreciate all the effort, even to this.
I mean, I've been doing this just us, you know.
Yeah.
I don't wanna have to get lawyers involved either, but I'm gonna do what I have to do because I'm just tired of everybody pushing me around.
I understand. Thank you. You're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our show, or you can go.
Really be it for the.
That's it for tonight's discussion. We had it on our agenda as unfinished business, but I think since we discussed it now, then we'll, we'll say that we did, that's already been talked about. So we won't go back to it tonight.
All right, then I think we'll just get going. If that's really the end. I appreciate everybody's time.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so under action item, we have, the first thing we were discussing was this communication from the Department of Public Utilities, and we are going to table that, so we don't have all the paperwork. Oh wait, you should have that. Oh, I thought you told me table A.
Sorry, no.
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 Just.
Two A.
You have, you have four A there.
I heard four A, sorry. Okay, so this is a communication of public utilities, a notice of petition from NSTAR for approval of deferral of major storm threshold amounts for 2020 storms. So this one I have digitally?
Yes. No, no, you have to sign it.
I have, right?
I'm here since digital, sorry. No signing. Sorry, as you can see, this wasn't a smooth transition.
That's okay. So this is.
That's the ever source?
This is a different acquisition.
They have a hard copy. Well, that's what you sent me.
No, this isn't that. We should be looking for NSTAR Electric. This is.
That's NSTAR.
It should be in your email.
I see Paul, I see Springfield Water. I see.
No, there's nothing about what we're talking here. This is all about the land of property. That's about the property on Gettr. There's nothing about.
So all that, um, this is asking us to do is review and receive this communication, so there must be a deferral?
Can you look in your email and see if I sent it in your email?
I see an email from, I don't see an email with any attachments besides one from Josh on Thursday.
I sent you your meeting material.
All right, it should be in, let me refresh and see if it pops up.
You got it.
No, he didn't send me a bunch of this stuff. I've been frustrated.
Can I show you?
Emailing him and emailing her and saying, where is this?
All that this is, is a review. Let me just see if it comes up here. Reviewing and accepting. It's not anything we have to take action on.
I thought that's what this was.
Yeah. I'm not seeing it, but it's okay. We can table it, because there's nothing we have to take action on.
No.
It's just saying that we got it. We know they're deferring the storm threshold amounts. So motion to table that until next week? Our next meeting? Any discussion? On favor? Um, oh, this is exciting. We're gonna appoint me as the chairman to the FERTA advisory board for 22, unless anyone else wants to do it.
I think the chairman has to do it.
Oh yeah, that's right. We decided, we tried to do that last time, didn't we? I tried to get rid of it last time.
The point, Josh.
Table the first one.
I think it has, oh, and the town administrator.
No.
Josh is the alternate.
Why can't we turn her up?
I think we looked at that legally, and last time around, I had to do it. All right, so do you wanna make a motion?
Motion to appoint the select board chair as to the FRPA.
And town administrator as designated?
As designated.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Are we gonna have separate motions for you and one for Josh, or you just?
Especially, we call that chunking. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we've got this, again, we're just reviewing and receiving. We have a communication from DEP that was sent to the exec director of Springfield Water and Sewer, and that was a result of the hearing from June 16th, and they're discussing acquiring two parcels of land totaling the 12.1 acres. So this is off of, they're purchasing it from Paul.
And the DEP told them they could do it.
And they told their, yeah. So Josh did attend the meeting, is my understanding, to represent us. There's really.
Yeah, there was Josh and Chip Norcroft and.
Yeah.
The chairman of the conservation.
So, um, do you know if this is separate from the 500 that they were looking at, or is this the same?
No, they, they only wanted the 12.
They only wanted the 12 out of the 500. Okay, that's a little less.
The information that Springfield Water and Sewer had originally given the town included the. included the property record cards, the whole thing. And that was incorrect, and it was corrected at that May or June sixteenth meeting, Friday morning meeting.
Okay.
So.
As I see it, the only thing the DEP did for us is they suggested that Springfield consider using the property for recreational purpose.
They've suggested that, I think, right along.
Yeah, so basically was, uh, released it.
Yeah. Continue to speak. Yes, George.
Is there a map available that shows that property?
I'm sure there is, if you look in.
Does, does it border the water supply up there, or does it?
I would imagine the assessors would have it.
Yeah, it does, it, it, it borders our water supply, Tom Blanford. So. Watershed. Why would Blanford wanna give up access to?
We don't.
We don't have any choice. This is, this is the, um, city of Springfield, Springfield Water Sewer, purchasing this from Hall Lumber. There's a meeting that's held with DEP that's just sort of part of the procedure. We went as representatives to just let people know loud and clear that we have a problem with Springfield purchasing more land, since they already own a third of our property. There's nothing we can do about it. The purchases going through.
There isn't anything you can do about?
No, we're continuing, uh, we've had discussions with attorneys and we're continuing to discuss, um, the situation with our representatives, um, and letting them know that, you know, Blanford residents are extremely frustrated with the situation. We feel taken advantage of, but as far as stopping a purchase, um, there was nothing we can do.
Why would Hall not wanna sell the land to the town of Blanford rather?
Well, town of Blanford doesn't, I mean, we're not, you know, we're not in the business of real estate. We don't necessarily wanna go along and purchase all of the property that Springfield Water is threatening to purchase. I mean, that's not really our business.
But wouldn't it be in Blanford's best interest to own that property and control it?
No, we're still not making taxes on it, though. If you're looking at it tax-wise, if we own it, we're not gonna pay taxes.
Yeah, that's true, but you also are protecting the town's water supply. You're protecting, and you're, uh, not getting, continuing the long way hassle with the Springfield Water Department.
But what's that, what's that then? We, every time Springfield Water threatens to buy land, we buy it? I mean, we can't, we can't, that can't be the answer, you know?
Depending where the land is, yeah. Because the more, more control they get away, and Hall just spent a fortune, uh, redoing Jones Road, the town road, and they did a fantastic job doing it. Um, so they have a big interest in that property up there, and I, I see them as a friendly neighbor um, in terms of property management. And I think there, there's a deal there that could be cut with them in terms of that property if, if the town expressed an interest. Hall is a, is a positive landowner in town.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I think, George, the way I'm looking at it, at that twelve point one acres, it's, it's watershed and it abuts our watershed, so I'd rather see, uh, Springfield pay a, a tax on it and still protect our watershed.
But they have control of it then, whether it's used for recreation or anything else.
Yeah, well, that's one of the big things that we're fighting right now, is that the land that Springfield Water owns be used for recreation. So hopefully, we'll progress with that and then.
From my, because my land borders a lot of their land, and I see a lot of their land daily. Uh, they're gone to the such extent that they now hire state police to patrol the land and check the gates.
I know.
And, and this, you know, historically, it's never been an issue, and there's never been an issue that I'm aware of, that that land has been abused by anybody who's, you know, walked past the gates on it.
Yeah, no, they've been doing that for a few years now.
But it's not got to that point where they're patrolling it daily.
No. Rainy, I hear you grunting. Is there something you need to say?
Uh, sorry about that, but, um, number one, my first question would be, has anybody spoke to Bill Hall? Um, I've spoken to him a number, number of times. He's a very nice gentleman. Um, of course, he is in the business, um, of lumber, and buying and selling is a big factor for him. However, he's a very down-to-earth gentleman. Second of all, uh, as was just spoken about Jones Road. Um, just prior to me leaving, I had spoke to Tonolinos because they were bringing truckloads after truckloads of material in for Springfield watershed into Jones Road. And I turned around and finally told them, number one, end it, because you were overloaded to transfer that material across the double box culvert on Blair Road. Now, that being said, Springfield Water and Sewer, I know are very, uh, a very powerful entity. However, nobody has really held them in check. And my question would be, is, has anybody spoke to Bill Hall on this property? Um, does he really need to turn around and transfer the sale to them? Um, would he be willing to consider alternatives? Maybe the town purchasing it, maybe not, but I still think that he's left out of the loop here, and he's a critical, critical point in this whole scenario.
Yeah, I don't know, Rainy, if Josh has spoken to him or not. That's a good question. We can definitely ask him.
I agree with what Rainy's saying, because I've met with Bill Hall several times, and he's very interested in Blanford and the wellbeing of properties that he owns in town.
Well, that's good to know.
Yes, he is.
Okay.
I mean.
He's a very good guy, uh, very straightforward shooter. Um, but more importantly, uh, the sale of that property is not gonna make him wealthy. He is wealthy enough. Uh, but as far as that goes, um, you know, part of this deal with Springfield Water going in there, uh, just prior to me leaving, I realized that they were transporting materials that were definitely way over the weight limits posted. I contacted Tonolinos, and he had informed me that from now on, he was gonna tell Springfield that it was gonna cost them a lot more, because they would have to come in off of Route twenty-three rather than, uh, Blanford Road.
Yeah.
But the whole situation there is, nobody, um, I shouldn't say that, but often, too often, Springfield Water and Sewer gets to do a whole lot of things that they should not be able to do, because nobody questions them upfront.
Yeah.
Are you, are you sure that Bill Hall was not improving that road, and you think, uh, Springfield Water is improving that road? Cause of my understanding that Bill Hall was improving the road.
Bill Hall was, Bill Hall was improving the road off of, off of, uh, Gibbs, not, not Blair. Bl- uh, for Blair, that was strictly through Springfield Water. Uh, Bill put in the road off of Blair to access the property he needed to access for, for logging purposes. Because he did approach me, and as far as drainage and how he was gonna put the road in and everything else. But that being said, I don't think Bill is aware, uh, and I don't mean that because he, he's a very intelligent person, but I don't think he's aware of the uh, negative factors involved to the town.
From my understanding, and talking to a couple of his foremen, that they were doing the work on Jones Road, and, uh, that they were paying for all the age and all the equipment that was being used, uh, to improve that road. And, uh, Springfield Water was never mentioned at all about the use of the, uh, of the road. They understood it was town property, the road, it was town, a town road, and that they had, uh, cleared with the town the rights to make, uh, to improve the road, and that.
Well, the, the, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, but the gate on Blair Road is under Springfield Water's control. So when, when, um, Bill Hall was turning around doing all that work, he put in a road off of Blair, cause he approached me as far as drainage and everything else. So I, I don't, I don't know the whole story, but I think it should be questioned, because I don't believe Bill is aware of what's going on here, and if, if he was, I think he would be very, uh, very sympathetic to the town of Blanford.
Wow, that's so good.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, guys. Um, next up, we have review and tech, take action on a contract to town and Wright and Pierce for SCADA. Are we waiting for Gordon to sign this? We go ahead and.
I, I asked Josh that question and he didn't answer me.
He didn't answer you?
No.
All right, so, uh, we talked about this a while ago, um, for SCADA. Let me see, I think that I had something in email from Josh. Hold on. Air people.
I would say sign it, and if it's gotta be Gordon, we can ditch your signature and do it again.
He said, um, that it has been approved by council. Um, so this is for updating the SCADA system in the water department, is it's been explained to me what the SCADA system is. I still don't understand it. It's a computer system, and it's something to do with cleaning the water.
Right.
It's important.
Where are you trying?
Um, I just wanna see what the.
She's got the original signature. Can I ask a question about the, the last one? Or do you need to make a motion that you received this stuff from Springfield Water?
I don't think we need a motion. I think it's just note in the minutes that we received it.
Okay.
Um, I don't have a signature on this one either.
But I do have, last page?
No.
There's two things attached. Here we go. All right, so I have a digital copy of the contract.
And you don't have a contract in front of you?
No.
I'm losing my mind.
Well, you've got this, but there's no signature to it yet.
Okay, so it's been signed, the copy I have has been signed by the vice president, um, of Wright Pierce, as well as town council, and tweeting the awarding authority, which is us. So, um, here's what we can do. The contract is between the town of Blanford and, um, Wright, hold on, I just wanna make sure I'm reading it correctly, Wright Pierce of Westfield, they're the project engineer designer for the plant SCADA and control system upgrade. Um, it is in the amount of. I just wanna make sure I see that on the contract. I see services for twenty-five thousand. Very long contract. Okay, basic B page to the designer, and it records with attachment A. Additional compensation. Do you know if I can print from this computer? I've never even tried.
What do you want me to print?
Um, let me see if I can let me print. Uh, print to.
Kind of open-ended.
That's the scope and sequence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, construction administration and all that, that's all of them, so.
I don't have.
Looking at the eighty-three thousand two hundred.
No, and that's, that's not on the contract either.
The only thing I can see is with the table.
I, let me just let him know we're gonna table it.
I don't care whether he knows it or not, we can't sign it.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable signing it.
If you can't give us the paperwork, then just go away.
I think we have the, we have what we need, it's just. All right. Yeah, so we've got the phase one estimated construction cost of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Um, and then there's, is there a phase two? And then we've got total proposed engineering fee. Yeah, I'm just confused about how this is.
Yeah, do we have the eighty-three thousand seven hundred seventy-nine?
Yeah. All right, so let's, let's hold on this.
Okay.
Um.
Motion.
Let's not table it yet, because if Josh calls in, we wanna, let's just hold on that. Um, Joanne, can we group the appointments, or do we need to do them separately? Do you remember?
Um, I write them separately.
Okay.
Um, just for clarity.
It does, it only, it doesn't matter. Um, okay, so we'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Joanne Martin, I'm sorry, Janice Trasberg is the first one. The Historical Commission for the term of July first, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-four.
Sure.
Second, any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome aboard again.
Thank you.
Let me sign this. Um, all right, I'm gonna let you, pass it over you. Make a motion to appoint Joanne Martin to Council on Aging for the term July twenty-nine, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-four.
I'm really not old enough to be there, but they accepted me anyway.
You're the.
Neither am I.
Is there a second? Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to appoint Pat Lombardo to Council on Aging for the term July twenty-nine, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-four.
Sure move.
Um, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome aboard, Pat. All right. This is Joanne. This is Pat. Motion to appoint Bob Twymann to Council on Aging for the term of July twenty-nine, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, Bob. All right. Um, we are going to make a motion to table, um, the contract for CPA until our next meeting. Any discussion? On favor?
No.
Aye. Uh, make a motion to table the proposed amendments to our RG contract until our next meeting? Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Dave, we're, uh, on seasonal closure of Old Chester Road.
Yes.
Yes. Do you wanna tell us about, uh, what, what's going on with that?
Um, try to close the winter for no maintenance.
Okay.
From October fifteen to the April fifteen, and I'm assigned to stay, travel at all risk.
Okay.
Um, one people have to travel down there is the, uh, water department and, uh, both offices.
We talked about this last week too. You're talking about that portion after the Baird Tavern down to the other section. Okay. Question, George?
All right, I'm speaking in favor of staying open. Um, it's, I, I live, as you know, on Blair Road, and I use that road frequently to get over to Chester, and I know a number of fuel oil trucks, especially in the wintertime, uses to access North Blanford customers. And I've talked to them at various times over the years about the maintenance of the road. Seems to be the weak sister in town in terms of its regularity and of being graded and taken care of properly.
Yeah.
Um, I've seen no reason why it can't be taken care of properly with the amount of equipment we have in town now, and, and that the access, the forcing businesses travel all the way around, as well as citizens. as well as citizens to travel all the way around to get to Chester, from North Blanford is, is a hardship. And it's no reason why that road cannot be maintained and kept open twelve months a year.
My understanding was the amount of money cost to get it up to the point where we'd be maintaining in the winter was gonna be.
The reason is it's been primarily neglected by the highway department for a number of years. And let it deteriorate as some of the other roads have. And therefore it causes it fortunate to get it back in shape. It's still not excused for not getting back in shape. Because then, if you don't take care of that road, what's the next road you'd go? Then the next road you'd go. And more and more the roads fall into more of this.
I hear you buzzing again, Rainy.
Yes, my point would be there's absolutely no residency on that road whatsoever. It only serves the Springfield Water and Sewer Department for them to turn around to have state police check their gates in the winter. They have numerously called in times because these gentlemen who are on the state police, not necessarily using state vehicles, could be in their cars and don't make it up the road through the winter. Uh, to be totally honest, it's the amount of traffic that goes through there, I find to be really unsubstantiated to turn around and have that road plowed. And the, and the expense it caused, it causes the town in the winter months. Uh, for it to be turned around and determined as to be a road not maintained to the winter months. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I myself have been on that road many, many times and never crossed, cross traffic. Even in the winter. So I, I just find it to be a huge expense on a town for something that, uh, I'm sorry, even oil trucks and everything else, ninety percent of the time, they take the alternate route because it's much easier for them.
Yeah, it's definitely not an easy road to pass.
I myself, from a safety point of view, uh, I'm not too keen on oil trucks coming down there.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I don't think in the wintertime, that's a safe road for, for an oil truck.
I agree.
When the road is in good condition, there's no.
I don't care what condition it is. In the wintertime, that is not a safe road for oil trucks.
It's a single lane. There's very, very few areas for a bypass. It is much safer for people to take the alternate route.
Yeah, I agree. Mary, did you have a question?
Does the water line go all the way down, uh, Old Chester, or does it stop at Carol's? I do not know. I think you ought to ask the water department.
The water line goes all the way down.
I think that if, yeah, if the, if there was an issue with the water line at that point, like Dave pointed out last week, um, highway could go in and plow temporarily to, you know, if there was an emergency situation. Um, but yeah, I mean, uh, we, I don't see a, a reason to keep it open in the wintertime. I think that the alternate routes are much safer. It's just not a good choice, um, during monsoon or in the wintertime.
And as far as emergencies go, we had an emergency over at Long Pond. The pipe got a water on air bind in it, and they had to get in. I plowed it with a grader. The same thing could happen if there was an emergency on any road. And they needed access. That's not an excuse.
Do we have to identify a period of time that it's closed for specifically, or can we just say the winter season in our motion?
Uh, I'll put up October fifteen, April fifteen.
Yeah, I'd go along the way.
Definitely use the most, um, signs are good for.
Okay.
Then if it's good weather and there's no snow, did you just go by the sign and say, use it at your own risk?
Exactly.
Okay. Um, so I would make a motion to, um, allow for the seasonal closure of Old Chester Road, um, from October fifteenth to April fifteenth. Is there a second? Any more discussion on it? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it for action items. We already did Sperry Road. Um, we have George Millard Road drainage. Um. Do we have any more information about that? Do you know, Dave, if, um, Mr. Stetson has repaired his, um, area on top of his driveway there?
Oh, I think I assume these guys put a belt fails a A.
Okay.
That's all I've seen so far.
Okay.
I think we should get Eric and Bailey to do some time.
Okay.
Discuss what Rainy and that the three of them talk about.
Okay.
Yeah, have you been over and, and cleaned out the ditches and smoothed it all?
Yeah, I, I had, I'm at all the other day.
Okay. So my understanding is the way it was left off with everyone was that once Mr. Stetson did, um, the top, his area on the top, then we were gonna look at Culver and, um, the drop inland. Okay. So, um, yeah, we can ask, we can put it on the agenda, um, for next week. We'll keep it on there and we'll invite, um, we can invite Mr. Stetson and Eric.
August sixteenth, is that okay? Cause next week is, uh, your Chester meeting.
Yes, yeah. Um, and we'll invite Eric and Mr. Stetson and we'll see where, um, we're at with that part and then going for it. And Rainy said he'd already purchased the Culver, right? So we're, we already have, okay.
Yep.
Okay, anything else or we're good? That's our, that sounds reasonable for that, for that.
I also have two quotes.
Okay.
Question?
Okay. From Cooper and Eminem. Oh, this is for the Birch Hill one, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we're looking at, um, excavating the drainage ditch, uh, adding material, soft cotton reasphalt. And then, oh, and then he did one for Chester Road too.
Sure.
Alright, so this one's for both and this one's for just, or, oh, no, this one's also for Chester. Okay, so it looks like this quote doesn't give us the cost of materials or anything. It's a daily, daily labor and then this one we have both. But I don't see a cost for labor, so it's kinda hard to compare the two of them.
Well, it's just a blanket cost. Yeah, that one's pretty, that one's kind of a.
Will we get contact with him again and, uh, make it more specific?
What do you guys think?
I would like to see it more specific because you can't really compare the two, the way they're written, the way that one is written.
Yeah, I don't know what the, I don't know which one had, were you leaning towards either of them as?
No, I was not.
Okay.
No.
What do you think? A better comparison so that we can compare apples to apples?
Yeah, I, I'm kinda confused. Because, um, Cooper here, he specifies, but he doesn't say, uh, you know, like he, his, uh, repairs on Chester Road. You know, he, there's no material unless it, his bit is including material.
Okay.
The other part is neither one of those says anything about, uh, the labor. Because that's gotta be, you call it fair labor?
Oh, yeah, fair labor practices.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I would just wanna see, um, if, sort of apples to apples, so we can compare it a little better.
I think both of them need some rework.
So for Chester, where on Chester Road is the work that has to be done? The far end.
After Henry Upstingers.
Okay. Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Um, so we'll keep you on the agenda for that, um, for next time around. Um, the dangerous dog problem on Birch Hill, we did receive an update. Let me see if I can grab it in my email. Um, that that was, uh, the, um, animal control officer had visited the house and that everything, um, had been met that we had asked for. Um. See if I can find this.
Yeah, that's what I read in my email for about concerning that.
Um, and I asked Josh to reach out to, um, Ms. Lanchette to let her know, and he did.
When did that happen, reaching out to her?
Um, he reached out to her on the twenty-sixth. Monday. So this says, um, and she's inspected the house and the dog set up. She had, um, met all the steps. We have asked of her and she's going to type a report for us. She's pictures of the insurance receipt, um, that was required as well. So that's all set. So we could probably take that off of our agenda under unfinished. Um, we have an expenditure report for this year to.
I think it's too early, we'd be going over that. I think we'd be wasting our time.
I don't know. It's not so big yet.
It's not so big yet. So what is it? This is August, so we should only be, uh, we're beginning of, one month in, so what percentage should that be in? What's that as a percentage?
Don't get carried away.
This is the, uh.
I got the one twelfth, no, it's up to you.
What is it? We gotta do that math. There am I live TV. Pressure. So at least I'm not the only one now. That makes me feel better. Whoa, it's point eight percent.
Yeah.
Building inspector, a hundred percent, hundred and eighty percent.
What? Is that this year's? Are you looking at this?
Oh, yeah, right there.
Yeah, but which, when was the date that was printed?
Well, this is six-thirty, twenty-two.
Oh, so that's two, that's from last year.
Not all that for this, uh, this four years.
From seven-one, twenty-one to six-thirty, twenty-two.
Yeah. And means a hundred first, hundred point eighty percent.
What, what?
That's a building inspector. Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so his whole budget for expenses was five hundred dollars and it's already spent. I am going to guess that that is some sort of a fee for a, a class or something, but we can definitely check in with him.
You must have something better than me because mine says building inspector and he hasn't spent it.
This was printed on July twenty-ninth.
Oh, this is.
Yeah, yours too.
We're looking at line item, uh, oh, one, five, two, three, two, oh, one, oh, oh, one. Page four.
There's total building inspector here. Building inspector stipend.
Yeah, it's under building inspector expenses. Joanne, will you just ask Josh about that, what that is? It's building inspector expenses. It's under two thirty-one total emergency. He's just already spent the five hundred. I'm assuming, and it's probably for like a fee for something that was like for the whole year and he just spent it already, but. Good. Mary?
I, I think if you look at it, it looks as though it was taken out and then put back in because it was carried forward.
Oh, yeah, you see that? Okay.
So if you're.
Thank you.
We started to begin.
Alright.
I hate it when they do that.
Did you see yours?
So our audit is obviously at eighty-five percent, but that's because we, we paid for the audit. That's fine. Um, tax title legal, legal fee is a little high, but that's probably because we just did some work on that. External IT is already at forty-six percent. Oh, we're gonna have the same discussion over and over again. This is because he paid the bill for, it was like the, the, uh, what you call it, bill. It's not software anymore, but yeah, okay, alright. We'll definitely say that to him next time you see him, though, just to annoy him. Built on ambulance, we paid that bill, that's fine. Workers' comp, we paid that bill as well as the retirement and the insurance. I've been blind. Everything else looks good. Alright. Um, Starfires, we've got a new date for, um, our baseball game. Yeah, is Colton still able to throw out the first pitch?
Yes.
Nice. Mary, do you know if it was advertised at all? The Blanford night for, um, Starfires?
The news, to the new date?
Yeah, so it's August sixth at six-thirty. Uh. Yup, tickets are ten dollars. And if you want a hamburger soft-serve, I'm sorry, soft drink and chips, it's an extra five.
And there will be fireworks after this.
Fireworks, so game and fireworks. My ginger line.
Do we have anybody? Will we allow to have somebody come sing?
Uh, no, they already had someone on the agenda for that. Um, but we do have Colton throwing our first pitch representing Blanford. So that's awesome. Six-thirty. We need selectmen Blanford shirts so we can wear them and represent. Nice polo. Okay, um, so yeah, we have to make sure that that gets out. We can try to send this, um, poster maybe to whoever runs the Blanford pages on.
Oh, I'll take care of that. I did last time.
Do you have the color one? This color one? Okay. Um, I think Lori Parent does one.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying.
Maybe Dave Chapey doesn't have one?
Josh does distribute it in his.
Perfect.
Newsletters.
Perfect. Thank you, Joanne. Um, the next up on, on, on new business is we have an email from Jen Gerard saying that, uh, we need to post a sign on the building that anyone entering, uh, wear a mask whether or not they are vaccinated. Just coming from the CDC. It is a recommendation and is not mandatory, um, for, to help, would like to follow the guidelines. So, do we still have our old postings, I'm assuming?
Uh, I'll make, okay, I just was waiting for you to approve it.
Yeah, so, um, we should probably repost and ask the people coming into town. So not closing town hall, but just asking people that come in to please wear masks. Okay. Does anyone else have new business? No?
I don't know how we made out, but, uh, couple of guys took the truck to Huntington yesterday for that touch of truck program.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, Dave Chapey and, you know, Sam went up with the new tanker.
Oh, that's good.
So.
Did they get any finger clips on it?
No, Dave, if there was, they got wiped off.
We're almost done, Marley. Um, okay, if there's nothing else, then we can adjourn at seven oh seven?
That's because we don't have half the materials we need.
That's right. We don't have Josh here with new business.
And I feel like um. I looked diligently. For all of it, I couldn't find it.
That's okay. Sometimes it happens.
Yep.
You're not gonna be here next week.
You, I'm not gonna be here next. Were you eating chives?
Next week is um the, your Chester, um about the police department, your joint meeting with Chester. Next Monday.
Yeah. Is that here?
Yeah.
We need it here or you're going to Chester?